Ms. Alvaro. Ms. Diggs, yes. Ms. Fite, yes. Ms. Lockier, yes. Mr. Delgado.
Present.
Ms. Salado. Ms. Saratelli.
Here.
Mr. Whitby.
Announcement of compliance with the sun channel. I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome all visitors to this meeting. We will now, you have the opportunity to address the board later on in the agenda. The reading of the minutes. While I take that, I'll read the minutes. I think we'll be back in a little bit.
Can you make a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion that clears discussion.
Do the motion.
You didn't ask for discussion. Before the motions are made, discussions are asked for. That's the procedure.
Then I can remove her second. She made a motion. It is a motion, but it has to be removed second. We have a discussion. There is a motion on the floor.
And the motion is what?
She wanted to say accept the motion.
But if we voted today for that, then there is no discussion.
We can't have a discussion.
Not if they're accepted, not if it's voted, accepted as presented. The discussion comes before that. According to Robert's rules, would you like to read them?
Would you, can we help this session, please?
Thank you. I do have a problem. It says it was moved by Mr. Whitby and seconded by Ms. Alvaro that the schedule of bills for June 8, 2012 be approved as presented. And then everybody voted yes. So I want to know where's the treasurer. Isn't the treasurer supposed to do all this stuff? We have an absentee treasurer. And as I understand, the treasurer has been absent a great many more times than she's been present. And according to our bylaws, we state very clearly that a certain amount of absentee negates the office. I think that we as a board should consider that now. I make a motion.
Is there more?
On that topic?
No, only this, we've discussed it all the minutes. We don't have more to discuss.
Yeah. It also says that we have paid $900 to Foundation Center. Mrs. Key explained that the Foundation Center provides a database for the use of nonprofits to help them find information on grants. Have we found any grants whatsoever?
It's not for the use of libraries, for the use of the public. We use it to net things, but it's not a database for the library. It's a database for our patrons. So I mean, I always keep record of what they, you know, net and they use it, but it's not a database for us. It's for our patrons.
So we've got any discussion?
No, I have something. I think if they're, if anything's late and there are a couple of connectors. When we left here on June 19, Mrs. Key had delivered a 24-minute presentation. That was a closed session, closed session, closed session personnel.
But why aren't we, I don't know whether we have a director or not. Why don't we?
Closed session. Closed session.
I'm here.
But I will inform that you were not leaving. You told us very clearly you were leaving.
That's a closed person.
Okay, let me, let me go.
But we still like to know.
In closed session.
Whether you were going to be here or not.
In closed session.
All right. There was a question I asked about the trustees, you know, for the payroll. I never, in the minutes, it says, "Mrs. Saratelli inquired if the name printed on the payroll transferred check could be changed from the trustees of the public library." I never asked that. I don't ask you to change the checks. All I asked was if on the report, we could please write in parentheses payroll, so it doesn't look like the money is going to the trustees. I did not ask for a change in checks. I would never do that.
Okay, let's begin over.
Okay, that's it.
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes, Mr. President? Which correction?
As per the amendment.
As per the amendment.
I have a question. There's a motion on the floor.
I have a question.
No. Well, there's a motion on the floor. We have to see if it gets seconded. A move and second. So we can, we second and move. Then we have to, then you can ask your question, but there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, it's about a minute, so.
But we just had a whole time for discussion.
Oh, he's continuing on with the right, so.
But we have to complete the motion. There's a motion on.
Complete the motion.
No, someone asked to second her motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Alvaro.
Go ahead. What's your question?
I just wanted, about the centennial, it said it was tabled. Was that, what do you think by tabled? Was that an official vote we took or? Because I don't recall that.
Well, it was stated that the committee would take over. Explain any other content that you can do with the committee.
Well, this, I guess we'll discuss that.
That he was going to, the board, yeah, he was going to.
Yeah, we can discuss that in the report.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Diggs.
Yes.
Ms. Fite.
Yes.
Ms. Lockier.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Whitby.
Yes. Certainly, the report basically related to 2011, 2012, July, August, 2012, this would be year 2012, 2013, July, August, and September 2012. I'm looking to table. Okay, I think in the absence of Ms. Salvaro, we're going to table treasury.
Excuse me, we table it in June. We table it all the time because she isn't here. I have a question about the report.
Can't answer. If the director can't answer it, the treasurer has to.
Well, how can I get the, how can the treasurer answer that she's never here?
That's out of our control.
That's ridiculous, out of our control.
Well, there is a problem. Well, if you want, if you want to take it up, I'll take it up.
It's tabled.
All right, I'll find out.
Presentation and approval of bills 2011 to 2012, June 30, 2012, officially here 2012, 2013, July 13. And I think somebody on the way to table that as well.
Please, but they should also be noted that every, that every board member, the whole bill list is here. The, all the supporting documentation is with the bill list and any board member is able to look at that list. All the supporting documentation is here. If there's a bill in particular that you have questions about, you can come into the office. All the documentation is here.
Reports of standing committees that have been over here.
I have a question. More, more of a discussion.
Okay, that's.
Regarding that.
Is it a standing committee or?
It is, it's a standing. About the planning committee. Just, I think there was, there was confusion on how to organize, looking through the bylaws, on how to organize a committee or how a chairman can organize a committee. And I think for going forward, for efficiency, for everyone, for every chairperson, the way I've seen it organized at its work was having the chairman ask for the offices and memos out to talk and writing and paper, asking, can we please, so that's just something I thought we should probably do in our bylaws, how to call for a meeting the most efficient way possible. Not everyone has email or not everyone checks their email frequently. So I think sending actual letters would probably be more beneficial for everyone involved. So it's on record, everyone knows. It doesn't have to say call the library. It could say, you could put the chairman's number. I don't have an issue with that person. You could put my number in the memo. I just think it's more efficient that way to organize a meeting and so that there's no miscommunication or whatnot. That's all.
How it normally usually goes is that they contact the president of the board and then you go forward and push it.
They have to.
Contact the president of the board, of trustees. If there's a chairperson that wants to conduct a meeting or have a standing, a committee meeting, contact the president and the president has a discussion with the library.
See, I contacted, I left the voicemail. I don't know if you received it or not.
You left me a voicemail?
Yes.
No, I did not.
In August, not in July. In July was when I first organized the meeting and came into the office. But in August, I called the office saying if everything was okay, because I haven't necessarily heard. Then I called you. I had, I believe the following day, but I left the voicemail.
But I will say, I will say I had, I went away.
Okay.
And my phone, my phone actually died literally dead, so I had to go replace it. So I didn't, but I did get the message.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying. Maybe it would just be better for everyone. Just, and the, and the effort of trying to make this more efficient and better for everyone and so everyone's on the same page, just let it just go out. I don't know if that's an issue, but I just, I just think it would, it would be more efficient to communicate with everyone.
Just in the future, just have a conversation with the board president. I think that's the way it really functions.
I made a motion that letters go out when there is something to be done on a committee level so that everybody is informed equally. Is there a second to the motion?
I second that motion. We put in an inter-office memo. Not a, not a big deal. You're going to send it out to a couple of people.
But the.
And then you're cool, you know? But like you said, your phone died. If something happens, then nobody knows anything.
But the issue is that you, you have to have, communication is between the board and the director.
Right, well, well, if you're.
Can I explain? Can I explain, finish my explanation? It is, you have the director, the board reports to the director, the director reports to the board.
There's a motion on the floor. You want to go down.
It was, it was second.
Okay. Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Diggs, yes. Ms. Fite, yes. Ms. Lockier, yes. Ms. Saratelli, yes. Mr. Whitby.
Yes. Reports of special committee. Okay, we have a centennial celebration. I bet because of miscommunication, it was not a scheduled.
I got, I did some homework. I don't know who I gave that to. Too much to keep looking. I don't know what type of function is there. I just have some information. If you guys want to discuss it afterwards or.
We can discuss it now.
Okay.
But you have one month of plan.
Right, right. So I didn't know, I tried to save it from the budget of, I assumed a thousand dollars, but that's just my assumption. I didn't know what official budget set for it by the library was.
What's important, the library does, it sets a budget, the board does. You set the budget for how much you want to spend for particular celebrations.
Are we asking?
I don't remember that we're asking, are we asking? We've never discussed the centennial with Saratelli. And you can't ask it if we've never said, we've never discussed it. This is the first discussion of centennial here. So he's going to give you the input and then we can decide as the board how much you want to spend. There was no discussion possible because we hadn't discussed it.
I think I just, I just wanted to know for myself, like, how many people did we want to invite? Do we want to have full catering food or did we just want to have appetizers? So I just wanted to know what the parameters were. Or is that just up to us? Or is that just up to us? Do we just, do we just decide that? I, I don't know.
I just think that's the planning committee and director. Do that together.
Well, just in the absence of time, I would like to make a motion that we allow the library to go ahead with the centennial celebration. We had one month of plan and unfortunately, the planning committee has not been able to meet. So now the centennial celebration needs to go on. Move forward.
Well, in other words, autonomy, just by herself and then planning boards.
I mean, you can have, what I'm saying, you can have input, you can put happen.
That's fine. What is, what is happening is question. He has plans, he says. So why don't you discuss? In the interest of time, we're not going to meet again before the centennial is actually October 5. And that is before you have another board meeting. So Mr. Delgado has indicated that he has ideas. It might be to your advantage to the board to just discuss those ideas and come to some conclusion because you have to get your invitations out, you have to make plans, if you're having caterers. That's what I, I wasn't thinking about catering. That's what I was thinking.
Well, I, I, that was just things I looked up just to.
But I was just curious on who are we inviting, how many people are there? That comes from the board, where we're going to have, that comes from the board and the planning.
Because we have time left. There's nothing to present, am I right?
There's some, there's ideas and some I looked up prices for certain items, but that's.
We're not in, we're not in a state of readiness to move forward, so that's all.
Well, can we know, can we know at least what?
You can schedule a meeting today, today, where we can meet up and then we move forward with the.
I thought it would work out. I would be more than happy to work with the central office. I know it's. And that's what we want to do.
Okay. Well, my question now is the budget.
The budget is going to depend on what you decide you want to do. The board has to decide tonight how much money you want to allocate for the centennial. And so.
We have a discussion, closed session.
Okay, this is the next one.
All right, I'm just saying, just a little. Just a, yeah, issues with you.
Well, we got subways from somewhere. I didn't know, like, cut up into a little hook. But for, I did for around 250 people. You could do it for about $150. Then with refreshments, if you get, depending what type of refreshments you get, I didn't do any alcoholic ones. $50, again, I was working off without, without having a number. I didn't know this was going to be a celebration that's just going to be very intimate. I didn't know if the public was invited. So those are, those are things we need to consider. Is the public invited?
Always.
Okay. That I didn't necessarily know. So what's the expected attendance?
So are we going to meet up here? Would it be in here?
This was going to be like a normal celebration.
Does whatever the board wants. Well, I'm just asking. I don't know. I don't know what you've planned so far.
I haven't planned anything because she told me you were planning.
I have planned, isn't that planning? The planning. He was trying to make a meeting and he could never get a meeting, so.
The planning, the planning committee.
Oh.
Let me just finish. The planning committee was to do the planning. And you recall at the last meeting, the board had issues with the amount of money I spent for the ribbon cutting. And I deferred to you. And you said the planning committee would handle it. And so that is why, you know, we have not been involved. Normally, the central office will have done the preliminary and brought you information, but you removed us from the situation by saying that you would do it, the planning committee would do it. So that's where we are.
Right, you really, let me just finish what I said, if you don't mind. The only thing that I need from the board tonight is if you do want us involved with the planning, you need to leave this, before you leave this meeting tonight, you need to have a set idea of how you want the celebration to go because pie is of the essence. And it's a big deal. Your centennial is a big deal. Well, that's why I'm saying.
Are you inviting the governor, are you?
I'm not inviting anybody. It's, it's the board's decision. It's not Dorothy Key's decision, it's the board's decision. Mrs. Key, can I just say something now, please? Apparently, Mr. Delgado contacted your office.
No, he did not. He contacted Alexis. He didn't, I have not spoken to him.
Oh, yeah. And he lied.
He just, he called me the day before the meeting.
Called the meeting for August.
Saratelli, so that we're all, we're accurate here. Mr. Delgado never spoke to me about the planning committee's meeting.
He spoke, he spoke to Alexis because I was at lunch. So not unavailable, I was at lunch. All right, fine. Can we just get beyond that? So for the whole month, no one would notify him that they weren't going to send out any.
I did not, did not contact me. I would notify him. I did not speak.
I, I assume the memo is going to go out because no one told me it wasn't going out. Since that's what I requested.
He did not speak with me. He spoke with Alexis.
And you mean Alexis never spoke with you?
Alexis spoke with me and I spoke to Mr. Delga, Mr. Whitby because I told him I could speak to Mr. Delgado. And Miss Nixon was not sure of all the details, so I put it in the hands of the president.
All right, so, so because of the circumstances, Mr. Delgado called Mr. Whitby. Mr. Whitby didn't call him back. He never got the phone call. The phone would dead knock. So I'm just saying the circumstances. So how can you plan anything? We thought it was just, you know, I thought it was just going to be the planning committee and you and Mr. Whitby, and you would, you know, you would get it done with this summer. Like I said, I didn't know you were going to be here. I, I don't know.
Do the motion.
In the interest of going forward. So that we're all on the same page. I'm finally saying afterwards, if the planning committee, we're not good. Are you okay? We're saying for a little after, is that, are you okay? But I'm saying afterwards, Ms. Key, if I'm saying afterwards too, we can discuss certain things.
It's a, it's a. There's a fraction I, we have to discuss money. That's what I'm hoping. So we have to do that with this meeting.
Okay, the money, yeah, the money's fine. Let's do that. Well.
Didn't you present it?
Well, board, on, in the interest, since we're inviting the public, I'm going to say this is a week-long celebration. I know that librarians were planning to present historical documentaries about the library, if I'm not mistaken, that can go out in the mail. Anyone else get the newsletter now? Yes?
I need to get a newsletter.
Okay. Documentaries, et cetera, that will go on during the daytime.
At least I don't want to go south quarterly. And I think I got the last newsletter, next newsletter, then we'll go out and talk to.
All right, okay. So at nighttime, everyone on October 5 itself to have a kind of sort of like a sem, not a semi-formal, for lack of a better word, a semi-formal celebration. Let's think, how many people do you think will come to that? If we invite, for example, city officials, et cetera. Maybe we could assume 200 people? How many people went to the ribbon cutting? Would this, this would be a night function. I would say it would best for it to happen at nighttime, the celebration, if we want to have maximum attendance, in my opinion. But that's up to you guys to decide with me, so.
Well, it's been my experience from the things that we have tried to do. We've tried to do some very lovely things here. For instance, the dedication to the historical room. And we went to a great deal of trouble to make it lovely. And we had practically no one show up. In fact, it was really sub-pitiful that we had to call downstairs and beg the librarians to take a few minutes off and come up. And our attendance generally is not good for these things. The only official that I have ever seen show up to any of these things has been our goodly mayor.
Okay, so let's, the first, you can't go forward without having the expected amount of attendance. I was assuming the high number. For lack of terms, if I'm used to it, I don't know how many people come to these functions in advance. So can we assume 100 people?
Well, we have to, we have to pick a number and hope for the best.
And hope, right, and hope for the best. So I would hate to, to invite people, to not get enough food for people. I would hate for the library to be in that position. But again, I would also hate to spend the hard money of the library on a drink. So we need to pick a number that's semi-conserved and semi-fairly loose of how many people we think are attending.
Well, can we just go by what we did for the ribbon cutting? I thought that was really nice.
But the pub really wasn't upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, they were.
They were, I didn't see very many.
I actually ended up sitting with some people.
Okay.
I didn't think that there were very many, you know.
I mean, there weren't many people in total, but the setup was nice for that amount of people.
What was the type of food?
There was coffee, there was water, different drinks. It was sandwiches, I think. There was a platter of.
Also subs.
Like a platter of vegetables. And then there were cookies at each table.
Okay. So if we want to, if we want to do that, if we want to do appetizers.
I think we should keep it simple.
Simple? Simple? I want to agree with simple.
You can have a lot, so.
Okay, so why don't we?
I do agree with Ms. Alvaro.
I agree.
I said I do agree with Ms. Alvaro. And the presentation, we had a little bringing up.
It was very nice. It was. We, so. One of, if I, if I may, one of the things that, I mean, I have done this kind of planning a lot. And to have something formal or semi-formal. It really should have been planned months ago, to be absolutely honest with you. One of the things that we want to do with a bi, with a centennial celebration, it is a big deal. It is a big feather in your cap to have this building celebrating 100 years. What we want to do is design what it is you want to project. You want to involve the public at every level possible. However, you have to do it in an informal way. Because you're talking about so many residents. If you try to have something formal or something that is by intuition, it's impossible. We can't afford to, to invite everybody. One of the things that I would like to submit to the committee, I talked to the department heads. I wasn't sure what the board committee, the planning committee, if you, you know, if you had something specific in mind. But I did meet with the department heads to ask them for some ideas. Would you like me to share those with you?
Sure.
One of the things that we talked about was the fact that not a month-long celebration, not a year-long celebration, simply because we have the fall concert series that's coming that we do every year that started in October. We have Hispanic heritage month, which runs from the middle of September to the middle of October. We have just finished the Latino heritage grant. And it's been a live program. So what the department heads thought might be a good idea, and I agreed with them, was on the actual centennial, which would be October 5, it is a Friday. If we could have a open house that day. Have it open, open house from approximately 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Have the mayor do a proclamation for the centennial. Have the mayor come and actually kick off the festivities. Invite your freeholders, invite your council people, invite your former board trustee members, former employees of the library, and acknowledge them. Have the mayor actually read the proclamation. And then have a luncheon for, for your city officials. A luncheon in. a luncheon in this room for a finite number of people. At the end of that luncheon, then we would have it open for the rest of the afternoon. There would be historical footage of the library that would run continuously. There would be coffee, tea, refreshments for anybody who came into the library. There would be historical exhibits on, in the children's area that pertains to the children's room, in the adult area, and in the display area on the third floor, where we have our formal exhibit area. We would order, we, and we had time to do this, we could order banners. I don't know if you remember seeing the Latino Heritage Festival banners that we did, but we would order banners that would, well, the main banner in the main lobby, I don't know if you, the Broad Street entrance, there used to be lines up there. We removed those lines. We'd like to put a banner at the window that would be, that would be there through 2013. And it would just say, Elizabeth Public Library, celebrating 100 years. We put that in the main library, we put a smaller one in each other branches, and again, those banners will stay up for the entire year. Mr. Alvarez, who is the head of our reference department, has volunteered to do commemorative DVDs for the mayor and invited guests that would not only become part of our archive, but would also give people a souvenir of what happened here around October the 5th, 2012. The, the video that would run in here all day would have information spanning the entire 100 years. We have a rich archive here, very rich, very historical, and so Mr. Alvarez, who is wonderful at this kind of thing, has volunteered these services to make sure that that will keep it together. One of the things that Ms. Nixon, who's crapper jacketed, is one of the things that Ms. Nixon has volunteered to do is, as the board likes the idea, she's volunteered to create centennial bookmarks and give them out to anyone who comes into the library that day as memento of the day. Those are ideas that came from the department heads.
Can I say something now? I think it's excellent. I really truly do. I think that that's more along the line of what I was thinking, you know, about not to have the resilient people in the library. It's excellent, and to have the open house and have everybody shop all the different things here, I think it's terrific. I really do. What do you say? I think it's really good.
Think that's good? I had a ball in mine, but that's not.
No, I don't think, I don't think that would be definitely.
Well, not a lot, since I never planned this year.
I know, but I was just saying, I think that that would be really good. And then at the same time, we have with the mayor with the dedication, and then have a luncheon or whatever we have upstairs here, and then, and I think that's.
See, because I thought something like that was already planned, because in the newsletter it said something kind of similar, that's why I mentioned the librarians before. So I was assuming I had planned something different, kind of sort of. No, no, that's fine. That's good.
As far as your luncheon is concerned, we, we here at Lumber, CNN catering, there's a company that we use a lot. They, as a matter of fact, we're using them for our luck reception. We use them here at least once a year. They're reasonable, they have a nice selection, and so it would be a buffet luncheon, and then, as I said, just open house for that afternoon. So the cost to you would be, just because we did banners for the Latino Heritage Festival Ranch, I know to get banners for the branches and the main library that will remember these banners that we used for the entire year of 2013, it will cost you between $600 and $700 to have those banners made. The other cost for you, Ms. Nixon does our bookmarks in-house, the, the cost of making sure we exceed these that Mr. Alvarez could burn, I don't know how much that will cost. Your next biggest expense would be the food. And for your centennial celebration, with freeholders being invited and the mayor, I think you want to make certain that we have something that's sort of elegant, and you're only going to do this again in 100 years. So, you know, silverware that is not really silver, you know, you can buy the silver cutlery and the clear plastic plates, they do cost a little more, which is why our, our bill for the ribbon cutting was a little more, because I felt that for that kind of celebration, we wanted to be a little.
If we really want to be fancy, china is rentable, so that the guy will buy it. If we want to get that fancy.
No, we're not, we're not doing it fancy. We're really doing it nice type manner. So that, so your biggest, at, at, your biggest expense would be your banner, your banners and your food. So what are we talking about? $30,000? I think that you could do a really nice celebration for between 2000 and 2010.
Where's that coming from?
It comes from the operating budget.
Operating budget, okay. That sounds good. I think we settled that, I think.
We have to make a motion.
I make a motion. That we do it, yeah. It's all along with the, the planning, I think it's terrific.
I say it. Ms. Altco?
Yes.
Ms. Alvaro?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Lockier?
Yes.
Ms. Saratoga?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Oh, I'll, I'll make a motion to Ms. Keen, give a budget of 2,500, maximum 2,500.
Maximum 2,500.
Maximum 2,500. I'm making a motion to allow Ms. Keen to spend 25, well, for the.
The branch a little more, so you can count. We have a good 2,500 this week out.
2,500.
That's mortgage.
Second motion. Ms. Altco?
Yes.
Ms. Alvaro?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Lockier?
Yes.
Saratoga?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Import the library that I put.
My report is in your packets, and you have no question about that. I do want to highlight one thing, and I'm going to pass this around, and you can look, you can look at it on your way out. It is, it's the final report that we sent to Trenton as a result of the Latino Heritage Festival Ranch. Again, you're going to hear the name of Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez is head of our reference department. He was the project coordinator for this ranch. Mr. Effinger and I worked very closely with him, and I am telling you that it gives me a great deal. That was the Latino, that was the Latino Heritage Ranch. And I, and I can tell you, one of the things that's not talked about in this meeting enough is the caliber of staff that you have working at this library. It probably is your most important resource. When I tell you that this final report is something that you can be proud of, I'm going to pass it around, you can, you'll be able to see the diversity of program, the thought, the work that went into this. It's unbelievable, and, you know, the people who came up with the ideas for the open house are the same people who worked on this, and it's fantastic. So I'm just going to pass it around. I didn't print out the whole thing, but you can just peruse it. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you was, and I guess I better put that in the first session, I guess I better put that in the first session, it revealed the personnel in a lot. One of the, the only other thing that I would like to harken to was something that came up. Ms. White and Ms. Saratoga, at the last meeting, you asked me to really zero in on how we receive our newspapers. I am in touch with a company called Hill City News, and they have assured me, I call my colleagues, they, they serve Summit Library, Plainfield Library, Cranford Library, Westfield Library, Rose Elkhorn, and they really have just come on a scene, because remember, one of the things that we were concerned about were the newspapers being left outside. He assured me that he would actually make sure they went into the book loft, so that they would be here when we arrived in a morning. So I am in conversation with them, so I'm hoping at the next meeting, I will be able to give you something concrete, so that we can say and prove it.
That's very good. Would that be savings from what we're presently doing?
It would be a small savings. It would be a lot, but the idea is we would not have staff tracing to the store every morning to get the papers, and we would have all of our papers coming from one source, because he has sent me a list of the newspapers they handle and everything we get, he can provide. So I just need to formalize that with him, so I'm going to make sure I get back to you on that. The other thing that you proposed, Ms. Saratoga, was the plumbing at Elmore. It's not covered by insurance. I have, I have something about that. I found out myself that it's not covered by insurance, and it's covered by the, the water company, which is American Water Company or Liberty Water Company, it's all the same. And they have a policy, and I have the number for you, and I have the website number for you. And what they do, it's not a great deal of money, okay, but they, it's up to, they will pay up to $10,000 if someone has to come in and they have to dig out the sewer line or the water line, all right? Or, and, and that's what it is, it's an insurance policy for that alone. And it's very, very good, because I just got it from my house, that's why I'm saying I got involved.
Can you give us your phone number on print page?
Excuse me?
Phone number?
Uh, yes, 1-866-430-0819, and you guess for the commercial section, and it's the American Water Resources, and they handle Elizabeth. And then, in, in the matter of the library and the Elmore branch, if they have to dig out, if you have to dig out the, the line because of roots getting in there, and that's what it is, their roots got in there and everything gets clogged up in there, and the plumbing doesn't work, so it's closed over. So once, once you get this, maybe in six months or so, you could have the work done, and they have a bathroom, I mean, they have to have the urinal up there.
I'll follow through on that.
It's just a suggestion, I mean, I, I got that at that for myself, and I figured too, if you agree with me.
One other thing, do we have a museum gas program?
I, libraries doing that. We don't have one, but I was at the luck meeting, the library directors of Union County, we meet approximately every five to six weeks, and a lot of my colleagues were talking about it on Friday, they're buying museum passes to different museums, and then they're making the passes available to patients. We don't have one, but it is something that I can look into and see what the cost will be for the library, and I'll report back to you.
That would be good, because I have the library, a lot of libraries around here, Springfield.
It's really, yeah, it's really getting to be a big thing right now.
Okay. Sounds good.
Uh, we need communications.
We have a thing.
Call them.
Whatever we have, we're putting.
You for reply. Unfinished business.
Okay. So all business, all business, yes, all business. The last thing, okay. Okay, the exterior renovation, I, I can tell you that it's done. It's done. It is done. Everything seems to have worked itself out, and, and we're done, so we can check that off. You will not see that on the old business again. The last thing that I needed to do, we had extensive water damage to brand-new leather chairs that we purchased for the senior space, and the bonding company made good on it. They sent us a check for the replacement, and when we brought chairs to the third floor, you'll see the two new chairs, and I had, you know, possibly backed that.
Ms. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Keen, did the, did the insurance company, your bond company, the insurance company eventually pay for the architect for all those months that they were with?
The what?
Never the architect had a fee every month for six, seven months?
He didn't charge it. The architect did not charge a fee.
Oh.
So we didn't pay, we did not pay a dime more than we would.
So he charged it, but they waived the, they waived it?
They waived it. They just want to take this whole thing done, so.
I just want to say, with the exterior renovation, I just wanted, on behalf of the board, just saying, I'm really committed with trying, with putting that budget together. It was not easy, and it was time consuming, and I just wanted to say thank you.
I appreciate that, I really do. I aged ten years behind, but it's done. It's done, and I appreciate your kind words. The Latino, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you, I thought you were going to report, so I just wanted to ask.
No, but we're, we're, then you go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask, slightly off topic, how the team services department is coming along with the new librarian? Their team services is something that's very, they know, everyone else would know, something that's very dear to my heart, since I came off in this library to the team services department under, under him, so I just wanted to inquire about.
The, I, I tell you, the thing that is difficult about teams, inserting teams, is that once they get a age, they go work, they have extracurricular activities, et cetera, et cetera. Our saving grace is the partnerships, are the partnerships that we're trying to forge. Right now, we have tapped into Brand New Day. They are coming over for a, a program in a couple of weeks, and Mr. Johnson is going to be there, he's our, he's our team librarian. We're hoping to make inroads. It's slow. It's slow-going, and I'm going to be very honest with you about that. But between new services, between Brand New Day, as a matter of fact, they urgently had a summer program, and they came over with their kids. So every chance I get when somebody young comes in, I try to impress upon them the, the variety of programming we have here. So, you know, keep asking about it, we're trying to grow it. We're going to be very involved with the schools, the high schools this year, we're going to try to get to some of the back-to-school nights. So, you know what, we're building from the ground up, because when Kimberly's there, you know what happens? They try to get out. And then you have a new prop that comes in, and we have to work with them. So it's a building program, and one that we put as much importance on as you, and so I'll keep you apprised that what's going on with that. The Latino Heritage Festival Ranch, you, you have the final report, and it's ready, and it's done? It's done. And so you won't see that on your old business. I think it went well. I think it went very well. In conjunction with that, one of the wonderful enroofs is that right now, the Liberty Volunteers of Union County, they're wanting tutor classes here in this building every Saturday for people who want to tutor. And we've made it clear that we need people who will tutor in Elizabeth. I know so many of you live in Elizabeth, you love Elizabeth, but we have difficulty getting tutors to come to Elizabeth. So we're hoping that a large number of those participants will come to Elizabeth. Right now, also, we are having GED classes that started here on Monday, and we grabbed them from this library, because again, we wanted to make it convenient for the people in this community to come. Only the classes are given here. The test, there's only one testing site left in Union County for GED, and that's UCC. So they're coming here for the review, mediation, instruction, and then they'll go to UCC and hopefully be able to pass. and hopefully be able to pass their GED. This is the first time, since I've been here, that the GED classes have taken place. So I'm hoping that this will work out for some of our residents.
Could people, do people register here at the library, or do they have to contact someone else?
Well, really, the GED classes are run by the literacy volunteers of Union County. They do the publicity, they get the word out, but we just provide a.
Just wait, okay. Thank you.
No, the 2012, the 2013 budget. I called Tony Zengaro, who was chief financial officer today.
The Schizmo.
What?
Uh, in the labor comp.
Oh, that's, that's, that was done last, I think it was the last minute.
It says all business right here.
No, but that's, you have to look at the.
Oh, that's the minutes.
That's the minutes, yeah. You have to look at the minutes.
The 2012, the 2013 budget. In anticipation of the meeting today, I called the CFO, our CFO, Tony Zengaro, to see how they're going to vote the budget. The budget's being introduced tonight at city council. And as far as I know, it's going to be the same budget that we had last year. So usually, we don't get the final word about our budget until before December. So it's the same place that we were the last time I talked to about. And if we can keep this left, I'll be happy. So that's where we are with it. And that's all.
I have something to ask. I'm very vague about vacation schedules. Because we try to get people certain times, and they're not around. And so I say, when are their vacations? I don't know. Nobody knows.
Have you took us back?
Well, specific, I was talking about your vac, when is your vacation?
My vacation, I took one week, and that was back in June. I haven't taken any vacation since then.
Because I know you're not here Fridays.
I'm here every Friday. Although, that's not true. Sometimes I take a personal day on Friday. But normally, I'm here, but I work on Fridays, unless I take a personal day or a vacation day. But I've taken one smaller day, and that was in June. Otherwise, I've taken a day here or a day there. Okay. And I don't, I, you know, when I'm going away for a week, I let the board president know. The board president knows I am out of the building for a week, but I do not contact the board president if I'm taking a personal day. I just don't. But if I'm not willing to send a time, Mr. Whitney as well, we are out.
No, any business?
Um, was the, I know we talked about the last meeting, the capital budget request that we put in for city hall, was that, were you able to do that? Was it too short?
I did not put it in, because Mr. Zengaro assured me that I'll be lucky if I can get, I mean, he did not encourage it. He said, if we are really serious about going forward, we're trying to build anything, this is not a good time, but I have to talk to the business administrator and the mayor. Not him. I, after, I, because I talked to him today about that, in anticipation of this meeting. And I called Bridget, who is our business administrator, and asked her to call me back, but she hasn't. But I am telling you that money is very tight, and it's going to be very difficult to get money for anything building program.
No, but we assumed that. We said that, you know, maybe it'll be two years or three years from now, or, but to start the process, once you, you know, bring it up, and we, you know, they know that that's what we want.
Well, they, I told, I talked to Tony today, I told him that that's something we would want. But I'm going to tell you, what would help you is if we came to the table with something with a way that we thought we could, as a board, offer, you know, I don't know. This, we really haven't done a lot of fundraising on this board. Some library boards do. It's something we might want to talk about and discuss. It's a whole different arm to what you do now, but when you are in tough economic times, and you're asking for money that's tight, it is always a bit take it to come and say, I need 500,000, and we already have 100,000. That's just, I mean, just a suggestion.
Do you know what boards do, kind of in interest?
Well, I can tell you quite frankly, some of your larger libraries, county libraries, some of your larger public libraries, but when you, when you do fundraising, the library board almost has to establish a foundation, which should need to be a final one C's for you. And so the board doesn't get that. The foundation gets it, because it's a nonprofit arm of the board. And so it's a whole process. But if the board is at all interested in something like that, it's a process that takes a while, and should be started with that idea in mind. So maybe if it's something that you're interested in, you can look at it, and then when, when the economy turns around, as it will, you'll be ready to buy.
There's another way to raise money, too. As I had mentioned to you, I think five years ago, when the money was available, that the government was only too happy to give us, at that time, give matching funds for library building. I don't know how much of that money has dried up, but it might be interesting if I could.
They haven't done it for years. They haven't done it, I mean, the state library did do that for a while, but they haven't done that in quite a while. I would say, I will find, I can find out exactly when they start. They don't have the money, the money drawn up.
That's what I was saying, but there are foundations that might be interested in matching funds.
We could contact a large foundation, different foundations, they've done that before.
That's right.
But then, even with the state, it was matching funds. The municipality had to come off of $250,000 that the state gave, $250,000. And that's just a figure that I'm squaring out. That was match for match.
But as you say, it'd be a lot easier to say, we could get this, if you could, you know, do that, from what you said yourself. Something you think about, we'll help you make that happen. I want to ask one wonderful thing. I was over at the Elmore today, and they had to sign up that, you know, that they couldn't have the movies in July and everything. I said, why do you have this up for September? And I was told that you're evaluating all the adult services there in the Elmore library, and they're not having movies anymore.
No, that, oh, God.
That's why I want to ask you directly.
Don't tell me who told you that.
No, I won't. That's why I'm asking you directly.
But let me say this to you. One of the problems that occurred at Elmore, and you know, Miss Saratelli, as well as anybody knows, that that carpet was destroyed. And movies are something that we do when we can. Movies were being shown at Elmore every Tuesday, and no staff member was in there. That's why I'm really evaluating, because you cannot have programming closed the door and leave people to their own devices. And more importantly, the people who were coming to the movies were not Elizabethans.
Really?
They were not Elizabethans. As a matter of fact, I was over there one day, and they said, I have two persons that come here, and you cancel the movie. Plus, there is, there is a group of disabled adults that were coming to the movies from Edison. They're the people who were chaperoning them, were not properly watching them, and that's how that carpet got destroyed. And so that was the rationale for, I'm not evaluating all the adult programming at Elmore. Okay. But I stopped the movies on Tuesday.
But the business with the movies, I knew right away, because I finally had gotten the newsletter, and it invited people to go to the movie in brown bag. Brown bag, you're inviting them to bring food? If you just have people watching a movie without food or drinks, they are fine.
But the most, the most important thing, and I was not aware of it, the most important thing is that you cannot have programming on library premises and not have it properly supplied. What literally was happening, is those movies were being shown at 12 noon. The doors were shut, and there were no staff members in there. I never thought that. So I'm not, as I said, Mr. Barbara Nowitzki, branch services, I am not evaluating all branch services. So I don't know who told you that, but I did, I did stop the movies on Tuesday morning.
But I know that when I used to go there, there always were a lot of people there. But I know that there are a lot of people from that area that can't afford to go to movies, and I know that they really do go to that movie.
We have a lot of movies offered.
Elderly, elderly people, and it's difficult for them to get to.
We have to find movies offered throughout the system.
No, but I said, it's difficult for them to get to, you know, they aren't thriving anymore to get to the main library, or get to another one. So I know that they really didn't, but I think the big problem was this brown bag, brown bag. You're having, you're inviting them to have a picnic in there.
I understand that you have to be Elizabeth resident to come to see the movie?
No, your public library is open today. I mean, if we, if we.
That's what I saw.
No, you don't have to be a Elizabeth resident. But the bulk of the people who were coming for the Tuesday morning, the Tuesday noon, were not Elizabethans.
But you just told me you don't have to be.
But no, we didn't stop it because they were non-Elizabethans. We stopped it because we didn't have staff cooperation.
So one has nothing to do with the other?
One has nothing to do with the other. No. Any programming we had, anybody's invited.
But I'm glad you made that clear. That you should consider it, because there are people, I know that there are really older people in the area that go there.
The only problem is, Miss Saratelli, is that we have a finite amount of staff. When we do it Tuesday, noon time, we'll be in half your staff at lunch. I don't have. Maybe at two o'clock.
We're going to have to do it noon.
We only, and at Elmore, remember, you only have two people there.
So they could just. It's only working from here to there. It's not that they have to stand there guard and watch everybody while a movie is on. They could, they could go in and out. It's not a, it's not a really big deal. But I think that if people are coming from out of the city hall, you should really punish the people.
I'm not, no, no, I just made that clarification.
No, I'm saying you shouldn't.
I did not make that. I just made that clarification. Everybody's well fine.
I know that there are people here that really can't go to a movie and spend 10, 15 dollars for a ticket. They really truly can't, and they really look forward to it, and really try to go to that.
Try to, first of all, we don't want to just do, we try to do a variety of programming. So we try to balance what we can do based on staff levels that we have. And so, the point is well-taken, and I will talk to Mr. Barbara Nowitzki. Okay, have staff that can do movies again, but right now, we can't. I don't have a staff. Just don't have it. Okay, Mr..
Okay, so just to, maybe there, so you spoke to different, the business administrator, but you're waiting to hear back from the.
I'm waiting to hear from the, the thing, what I was advised to do was talk to the business administrator first.
Okay.
And so I have a call in to her. And all, I mean, all she can do is tell me there are no funds available anytime soon, or there are. Because right now, according to, you know, we're not, it's just no money for capital projects, especially building projects. So all I can do, and then you know what? Based on us just trying to get a budget for operating expenses, I wouldn't be overly optimistic about us being able to build anything for a few years. The only thing that I can see us doing, based on what I've heard, is laying the groundwork. As you said, laying the groundwork.
That's what I was going to, all I really was asking, that we start whatever the process.
At the very least, at the very least. That we lay the groundwork, so that we can leave something nice. All right, Mr.?
What are our chances on the interim suggestion to space? Out for the.
Pardon me?
What's the progress on funding that, on interim suggestion that we.
It's the same thing as the movie. Correct. And so it's the same thing. There's no money for them unless they have to take money for the capital project. Isn't that, what happened?
No, 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 we're right. We're just not talking about care, about.
Okay. The Elmore branch, when the roof is on, if you remember, Mr. Whitney called the board because we weren't meeting, we were able to, we actually took the money for the roof out of operating expenses that we had, money that we had left in the budget, because it was not, it wasn't an option. The roof had to go on, it was an emergency. So the new roof is on, it is. The same thing.
Twenty to seven, twenty-five to seven?
We took the old carpet, and we set the title like we have in here. So if you have a program, and somebody wastes coffee, it might catastrophic, because no matter how careful people are, you know accidents happen. So the reading project, one of the things that has not happened at Elmore, and Mr. Barbara Nowitzki has really coordinated this for us on Friday mornings, when we have the hour available, we've been doing a massive reading project at Elmore. And so that has alleviated some of the shelving problems. It can't alleviate all of them. But it's a public library. One of the things that must happen when you're in a facility the size of Elmore, is that when you buy a book, you have to read a book. We are not, Elmore is not a research library. It's a public library. The bulk of what we buy is for recreational reading. And so therefore, when we read from Elmore, please rest assured that all the books that we're reading from Elmore are not being thrown away. In fact, they are sometimes being held. So the main library, there's plenty of space here in the main library, which means that you go on our catalog, and there's a book that we feel should still be in the collection, it will show that it's at the main library, and we have courier service. If you're in Elmore, and you want the book, we'll deliver it to you to Elmore or LaPorte or Eport, then I say.
If you are, if you are not, if you are reading it out, and you're waiting here, then there's no, no.
Some of them are being weeded, just because it's what we do. We have criteria that we use for weeding, and if it meets those criteria, they're weeded. But if, if, if.
Should I understand what we need?
No, I understand what we need, because I just want you to know.
What, you know, what we do.
We, we, what happens is, we're buying books all the time, and we're weeding books all the time. And we look at the number of times a book is circulated. We look at the last time it's circulated. We look at the subject matter, because certainly there are some books that become obsolete. Your computer books come, become obsolete quickly. Certainly, you cannot have health and science books, medical books. You can't keep those on the shelf. So their books are just normally weeded out, and of course, they're doing business. But if there's a book, and there's space constraints at Elmore, and we have space here in the main library, and something we need to keep in the collection, it comes here, and it's still available to you, it's just not sitting on the shelf. And Elmore is sitting on the shelf.
Mrs. Steve, I'm a fifth grader, and I have a science project that I have been given by my teacher. So I go to my local library, which is the Elmore library, and I find out it's a book of storybooks, and there's nothing for me to do with my science project, no?
We can do that. We have basic reference books that could still be at Elmore that would serve the needs of the children in that community. We would not do that. The basic reference books that you need would still be that.
Beyond inside the people.
Beyond inside the people. Absolutely. Absolutely. We wouldn't do that. We're not crippling the collection. We're just putting it where.
Where you can't reach it.
We, no, that's not it. We're not crippling the collection. We're reassigning it to another location where there's space available. But we're basic, if you go to any branch, you will find a basic reference collection there that will serve the needs of the children in that community.
Well, also, there, one of the problems, I, this is just personally, that I see, is that there are a few authors that write with other people, and they put out a book every 15 minutes. You have three shelves loaded with, you know, like, one author. Jake Patterson, for example. Every month, there's a new one. You have to have like 40 books there for him alone. I can see weeding that out from.
What happens a lot of times, because somebody's politically engaged, Patterson. Excuse me, a person will read a new book, and then they want to read a retrospective of all of his. Excuse me, a person will read a new book, and then they want to read a retrospective of all of his work. We can't keep a retrospective of all of his work in.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So that is the kind of thing that comes to mind.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, if it keeps going on and on and on in perpetuity, you go in there, you can see from there to there, just that one author, because he writes with other people. So everybody writes along, and they literally get out a book every month, every six weeks.
Well, we're basically, we started to find timely name room. We need room? We're, that's where, I think we just lost the.
Comments from the public?
Yeah, this is Robert Trent from the city of the list. I see that there are two males up front, and all the rest are females this evening. It seems to me that all the security guards that I see are black at present. There used to be, I'd say, an Irish library supervisor. Then he had a white or Irish secretary. There were O'Rourke, O'Donnell, O'Densey, O'Hara, O'Kennedy, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe in the year 2010, the Republicans are trying to kick out Obama.
Thank you. We have. I'll leave an motion to go into closed session. Motion to go into closed session.
I second the motion. Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Lockyer?
Yes.
Ms. Altavelli?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Okay, the first thing before we, I want to hand out to the board members, these are invitations. Remember, we're part of LUP, which is the library of the Union County. Every year, the directors have a reception. The reception is here this year, we virtually have an hour exterior renovation. So there's an invitation for you. It is here, it will be on October the 4th, and it starts at 6:30.
Good.
Boy, may that.
Yes.
Your name, just type your own. Please RSVP to, to me if you're coming, so that we can know how much food to order.
And here we go.
But LUP is paying for this.
I know.
LUP, the libraries of the Union County.
October what?
The 4th. It's a Thursday before our opening house. Our Thursday night and Friday. And Friday morning.
Um, I would like to make.
Alexis, it's written right here. I know with the.
Did you guys start this lobby?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to accept reservation for Merna Piadish.
Second.
Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Ms. Altavelli?
Yes.
Ms. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Lockyer?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
I make a motion to have a budget for $500 for Mr. Mantel's retirement breakfast.
I second that. Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Ms. Altavelli? Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Yes. I make the motion to accept Joe Mantle's retirement.
No, he hasn't, he hasn't, Saratelli, he's leaving.
Oh, we, so we just move to breakfast?
We just move to the breakfast, that's it. He means we'll accept him. He's here, so I'll go to him first.
Oh, okay.
Does it count in the minutes now, or does it count in the days?
He is the hours. He is dancing through the place every day. He's very.
Are we getting a meeting or is it not being done?
I'll tell you how many.
I know, I always do some good things.
Okay, I make a motion to pay Violet Monha, Monha?
Monha.
Monha. She's getting a library assistant position, oh, excuse me, court one position, at $27,347 salary.
This is over for publication or not yet?
Uh, no, this is, this is, once you vote on it, an open session is open for publication.
Okay, so we are now voting that?
Yes.
So we can say congratulations.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I'm, I'm.
Who's second?
I don't think.
Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Ms. Altavelli?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Lockyer?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Yes. I'll also make a motion to hire Lisa Bennett as principal library assistant with a salary of $29,599. Only promoter, excuse me.
I second the motion. Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Full-time benefits, yeah.
Ms. Altavelli?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Yes.
The only other thing that I need the board to, I think we better have a motion that I can hire at the supervising maintenance coordinator.
I motion that Mrs. Steve can hire a supervising supervisor, maintenance level.
I second the motion. Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Ms. Altavelli?
She didn't mention it.
Um, that's, we had said a range of 50, 60,000.
Yes, they're going to range at 50, 60,000.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Yes.
One last thing, it was in my pile. I received a call from Public Works at City Hall. A complaint had been lodged that as you leave your Broad Street, you're walking from the Broad Street entrance down to Supreme House, you get to the bridge, we had pavers up to that concrete sidewalk. A lady in a wheelchair could not get her wheelchair, because the pavers had shifted. And City Hall has said that we are responsible for fixing that. I am in the process.
Pavers, did you say?
The pavers have, you know, you know how they, they do. And so we have to fix that, it's a, it's a safety issue. And so I'm in the process of getting quotes. The money will come out of the line, line item budget for repairs. The money is there, that's what we'll use. Based on the quotes that I have so far, it's going to cost anywhere from 45,000 dollars.
Wait, 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 excuse me. Those are new papers? The papers that we put down for the renovation?
No, no, this was here before I came.
Oh, so we can't get back.
Oh, no. No, these were done years ago, when they put all those papers in front of the building, when they did that. And so they shifted, and it's true, I went down there, you could not get a wheelchair. You can't have a wheelchair. The money is in the budget. I'm getting free quotes. I will check where I can go with the most, I just want to be born to be aware of that.
I move that we post them.
I second.
Ms. Alvero?
Yes.
Ms. Altavelli?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dick?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Lockyer?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Yes. Well, that was great.